I'm meeting as called order. Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Please stand at the indication and the pledge of staying standing given tonight by a council member, Mr. Larry Campbell Jr.
Father, we thank you, Lord, for this great day that you allowed us to wake up and to see. We thank you, dear heavenly Father, for the great city of Danville, for all of the employees who serve the community, and to render the services to make everything efficient. We thank you for our council, Mayor, City Manager. We pray for your wisdom and knowledge tonight, as we shall make major decisions that will affect our people. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Under special recognition, I'd like to present a resolution, and I would like to ask Mr. Johnny Mayo, member of State Governing Board, Virginia Organizing Association. Will you come forward, please?
And I read this, whereas Virginia organizing is a nonpartisan statewide grassroots organization dedicated to challenging injustice by empowering people in local communities to address issues that affect the quality of their lives. And whereas Virginia organizing encourages participation of those who traditionally had little or no voice in our society, whether it be individuals or groups throughout the Commonwealth, to bring about change by working together and building relationships. And whereas among the organization's statement of belief is a belief that all people should be treated fairly and with dignity in all aspects of life, regardless of race, class, gender, religion, secular orientation, age, ability, or country of origin. And the organization also believes in the enhancement and celebration of diversity in our communities and in our state. And whereas the organization believes that community, economic, social, environmental policy should be developed with the greatest input from the people it is meant to serve, and that the policies should promote, celebrate, and sustain the human and natural resources of Virginia. And whereas leaders, members, and staff of the organization work tirelessly to connect children, low-income residents, immigrants, veterans, retirees, people with disabilities, and other unrepresented groups to the resources that they deserve and need. And whereas the organization serves as an anchor for more than thirty program groups, working in partnership to support additional work in the areas of the environment, human rights, housing, transportation, and community support. And whereas the Danville chapter celebrated a ban the box victory that removed criminal history questions from city job applications, promoted weatherization standards for low-income rental properties, and organized unemployed residents in the city of Danville in addition to numerous efforts on statewide and national issues. And whereas this year the organization is celebrating twenty years of grassroots organizing and bringing about real change for real people through countless campaigns to improve the quality of life for all Virginians. Now, therefore, I assure my congressman, Mayor, City of Danville, to hereby recognize and commend Virginia organizing on its twentieth anniversary, and encourage others to learn about and support this organization and its efforts. Given that in my hand is twentieth day of January 2015, Chairman and Congress, Mayor. Thank you, sir, for all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Would you have some comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and City Council members. And we glad to receive that proclamation on this day. And I want to also thank my child person. She sit on the State Governing Board with me, Sandra Cook. She's from Richmond, Virginia. She's Will Child Byron. And she does a great job for it. And I also want to thank all of my members that came out today.
Would you all please stand there? Uh, Mr. Mayor, would you like to act in the stands, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Back to you, sir.
And as you mentioned, we worked on a lot of issues concerning the citizens of Virginia, of Danville, Virginia. And most of the people that we've come in contact with are people who feel that they're gonna have a right or a voice in the issues that go on around the city. And we try to get them to come together and discuss the issues, and try to come to talk to the right people. Most of the time, you all see what can we get done to help their lives. And we really enjoy doing this work. And we really also enjoy coming to talk to you all, because you all always treat us family. So we want to thank you all for that. And also, on this twentieth anniversary, we'd like to invite anyone who want to come and join Virginia organizing to please contact Nick Bellinger or myself. You can call Nick at four three four seven oh nine four nine five three, or you can contact me, Johnny Mayo, at seven seven zero three two one three. That's four three four seven seven zero three two one three. And also, the issues we were working on, like ban the box, it was a campaign that we all was trying to help a lot of people getting out of jail. And they had issues. They had felonies on the record. And we want to get them to apply for city jobs, and don't want them to ask that question. And you all accommodated on that and got that passed. So the people do realize that they can get things changed if they just sit down and talk to them. So we appreciate that. And also, we having a meeting, a phone meeting, for children healthcare in Virginia. It's gonna be Wednesday, January the twenty eighth, from six to seven thirty. And we would also like to invite any of the members or anyone in the public to come out and join us on that. We're gonna be discussing Medicaid expanding, the CHIP programs, the FAMIS program. We think it's very important to keep our kids healthy and insured. And since we can get Medicaid expansion pass in the state, we want to do all we can to make sure that everyone's covered. And me personally, I know back in the nineties, when I first come to the city, Danville ranked the fourth place in the country to live. I don't know if you all remember that. We was ranked, they did a ranking on cities to live in, small town, and we ranked number four. And I think it would be great if we could do the things that it take to get back to that ranking, which gonna include education. I think also, we need a new school. That school, we've been had GW's been here, and they teaching the old, old stuff. And with this new technology, we need to train our kids for the future. I work at a company called IKEA. And it's all, they have state-of-the-art equipment. And they have a training center set up at the arcade building. That's what they do. They train all their workers from the ground up on this equipment to make sure that they can all compete and keep a good job. So I think that's, if we could go back to being ranked highly, like the fourth in this, in this country, that would do Virginia's good. And in closing, I just once again want to thank everybody for this proclamation. It's a great day for Virginia organizing, and we really appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me just say that we know that you do a lot in our city and in the state. But regards to City of Danville, we know that you partnered with the city to help a lot of people sign up for weatherization.
Yes.
To lower the utility bill. Big help to a lot of people, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under communication, anyone wish to speak on any matter not on the agenda will be heard at this time. If you wish to speak on any agenda item, you will be heard when item is considered. Anyone wish to speak? Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Saunders. Good evening, members of council.
Good evening.
Mr. King, staff members of City of Danville. My name is Davis Montgomery. I'm the district manager for Duke Energy Corporation. As I have in the past, I come by about once a month to provide you on any updates. I dare say my update tonight won't be as long as my introduction, so I'll go ahead and get to it and save you some time. Very little has happened since the last time I was here before you, but one, one item of significance would be the EPA ruling of coal ash as being non-hazardous. That happened on December the nineteenth. This was something that had been in front of EPA for quite some time, waiting for a ruling on it, and they finally made that on December the nineteenth. What does that ruling mean? It basically says that EPA is going to pass the overview and purview of the coal ash ponds to the states. They're just gonna provide some guidelines, but it's gonna be up to the states to decide what they're gonna do, each and every individual state, as opposed to the agency itself overseeing that and taking care of any issues that may arise out of it. So they're gonna defer to the state. In terms of some of the industries out there that were interested in that, recycling industry, which of course uses some of this material for cement, wallboard, paint, and some other building materials, it effectively means that that will continue to take place. As I reported to you at one point in time, we recycle a little over sixty percent of the coal ash that's produced today. So it keeps that industry alive and well. Other things that have happened, as we periodically do, we had inspections of the dam, dams at our Dan River plant, both the primary and the secondary dam, the discharge tower, and some of the other equipment that we have there. This was done by an outside agency. No immediate threats were identified. They just recommended that we continue the ongoing surveillance and monitoring that we do today. There's a complete study, or complete report on that on our website, but that, that is done every year and done by an outside agency. The Dan River Stakeholders Team continues to meet. Their next meeting is this Thursday. At our last meeting, we had Miles Bartos, who has talked with you folks, come and present some information to that group. They had a good exchange, back and forth of questions and answers. They have identified some priorities and some projects. And at this next meeting, which is taking place on Thursday, they're gonna refine those a little bit and try and hone in on some things that they'd actually get, like to see done. So that's what will be happening this Thursday. The last thing that I have to report, excuse me.
Go ahead.
The last thing that I have to report is just that we follow our coal ash excavation plans. And I make the distinction, the excavation plans with NC Deaner, the equivalent of Virginia DEQ, back in November. They have those plans. We have yet to hear from them in terms of complete approval, suggested changes, or anything along that line. But we continue to do our background engineering work. We continue to look at permitting that we may need to put in place, take whatever steps we can, so whenever we do get the go-ahead, we can move just as quickly as possible. That's it in a nutshell for me. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Since the EPA doesn't consider hazardous waste, you know, when the spill occurred here, the EPA came and inspected. Now, does that mean the next time it happens, they won't?
No, sir. They will still, if anything like that would ever happen again, because it was in a waterway, it becomes a purview of the federal government. So that's why EPA was involved. It still means that they will come, they will still do the same due diligence that they did today, just in terms of the way the material has to be treated. I've heard it compared to, you can basically treat it like household waste in terms of a landfill. But I think their recommendation was that it be put in a lined landfill.
And does this decision of EPA alter your timetable at all to moving the waste? And what is your timetable for removing all the waste from that plant away from the river into safer areas?
Yes. EPA is not involved in that. That becomes between us and the state of North Carolina. As you know, North Carolina is the first state to pass a Coal Ash Management Act. It outlines the closing of those ponds, not the excavation. We had a direction from the governor through NC Deaner that they wanted us to provide the excavation plans, which we did in November. If we can stay on track with the timeline, our, our goal was to start moving material by May of twenty, of this year. I keep forgetting we're in twenty fifteen, but of May of this year. That was our goal. But of course, we have to get the okay so we can move ahead.
And finish by?
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
That, that, that and three other sites have to be closed by August of twenty nineteen. That's the deadline.
Thank you. Other question? Tell me, Mr. Montgomery, or Mr. Gilstrap.
Yes, sir.
Could you clarify again the EPA rating, I mean, the verdict?
Non-hazardous versus hazardous. They ruled it as being non-hazardous waste.
Non-hazardous, but still not necessarily safe?
Last thing I want to do is try and speak for the EPA. There's probably more pages there than there is in all these, well, if you had encyclopedias when you kid, there's probably more pages in that ruling than was in that whole book of encyclopedias. I can't speak to that, sir. I just know that the ruling was-
Well, the question is, they didn't rule it safe. They just ruled it non-hazardous. I mean, if it's safe, then why remove it?
Well, and I think that's some of the things that they're gonna leave up to the state to decide. But you're right. They, they did not say it was safe. They said it was non-hazardous. But it was compared, and I would say this came from some of the environmental community, that that means you can treat it basically like you do household waste. I don't think that's true. But I'd have to read the full order to make sure. But yes, sir, the ruling was actually non-hazardous.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry I stepped around that, but I really don't know.
That's all right. I understand. Mr. Buckner?
So it will still be cleaned up in the Eden location?
Absolutely.
And everywhere in North Carolina, will it still be cleaned up?
Absolutely. That was part of the Coal Ash Management Act that was passed in August, that they, those ponds will all be closed.
Right.
Then all the other, the high priority-
I understand they'll be closed, but will they be cleaned up?
And the excavation act, or the excavation plans absolutely determine that those plants will be, that material will be moved away from the river. Yes, sir. Absolutely. That goes without question. We're just, we're just trying to stay within the timeline. It's a very aggressive timeline.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other question or comment? Thank you, sir.
As always. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to speak? Or any matters not on the agenda? Thank you. The motion to approve the minutes of our December sixteenth meeting, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Vogler, second. Discussion of the motion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Consideration of adopting an ordinance amending year 2020 land use map from multifamily residential and retirement, retirement living to community service and rezoning from multifamily residential to highway retail commercial district. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Biddy Johnson-Moan, and I own the property located at nine ninety-five Pine Forest Road, known as Johnson's Trailer Court. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Any question, council members?
That is the, the trailer park next door to Golden Skillet.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else? Close the public hearing. Counselor, your pleasure. Mr. Shanks.
Yes, Mayor, I move for adoption of ordinance amending the year 2020 land use map from MR multifamily residential and RL retirement living to CS community service and rezoning from MR multifamily residential to THRC Highway Retail Commercial District, nine ninety-five Pine Forest Road, parcel ID number five three seven three three, and parcel ID number seven three zero two zero, otherwise known as grid eighteen eleven, block oh five, parcel twenty one, and grid eighteen eleven, block oh five, parcel twelve, respectively, of the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map.
Your second, Mr. Rowley. Discussion of the motion. Please call the roll.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye. Consideration of adopting an ordinance amending twenty twenty land use plan from suburban single-family residential to community service and rezoning from suburban residential to conditional highway retail commercial. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. Counselor, your pleasure. Mr. Campbell.
Yes, Mayor, I move for the ordinance amending, move for the adoption of ordinance amending twenty twenty land use plan from SSR suburban single-family residential to CS commerce, community service, and rezoning from S dash R suburban residential to conditional HR dash C Highway Retail Commercial, eight point seven zero one one acres of parcel ID seven oh nine two eight fronting on Riverside Drive, otherwise known as A dot seven oh one one acres portion of the grid nine seven zero seven, block zero zero six, parcel one of the City of Danville zoning district map.
Okay, your second, Mr. Vogler. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Rowley.
Mr. Gilley, can I ask you a couple of questions? I see a number of things have been proffered. This is the property that we looked at, but we only had six council members, I think, present. And on the proffers, we have kennels commercial proffered out. We have veterinary clinics, okay. Does that, does that mean that no dog, no animals could stay overnight? Or what?
They could not operate a commercial kennel at that location. They couldn't, it's the same proffers as the property next to it that was approved by a city council late last year. So they're, they're matching the conditions, and, you know, they cannot have that kind of thing at that spot.
And that, that means you can't have animals overnight?
Correct.
And because of the size of the property, apartments cannot go?
It's, will be highway retail commercial, so you can't have apartments in the highway retail district.
Very good.
And with the same conditions as the adjacent property, if they need to reconfigure lots, they would have that ability.
Okay.
Question. Okay, it's gonna be a veterinary clinic?
No.
No. It's not? Okay. What's it gonna be?
It was just something that wasn't proffered out.
Okay.
It's got a potential for a number of different uses. They're just setting it up for highway retail commercial. They had the adjacent property, which rezoned last year. They wanted to add some additional property. They need to match the conditions on it, and then they can market it for commercial property.
Okay.
With these stipulations.
All right. Mr. Shanks.
The, I don't, I don't have any problem. Is it, the depth of the lots only a hundred feet? Is that, are you satisfied with that in terms of the buildable lot?
It would be a buildable lot, according to the zoning code. It would be a smaller building. But this also, again, allows for the reconfiguration of the adjacent property so they could adjust, they could consolidate, they would have the same conditions. That was one of the things we wanted to work with them on, is making sure that both lots shared same conditions so they could consolidate or reconfigure as necessary.
One last question on that. Is there, how does outdoor advertising fit into this zoning?
It is not permitted. The city doesn't, hasn't permitted outdoor advertising since at least the nineteen seventies. There was an existing billboard on that facility which has been removed and would not be allowed to be re-erected.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Further discussion?
I'd like to, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just go on record. I think the gentleman before that came, came before us that night, Mr. White, I believe it was.
Oh, okay. That was for the apartments.
Yeah, I, I almost want to apologize to him. He had a good, good plan, but the neighborhood, that's the reason I voted against it. Neighborhood was so against it. But now, one of the neighbors bought the land, and now they want to do some things with it, and there's no, seems to be no opposition. I just want to go on record, I apologize to Mr. White. I probably made a mistake when I voted last time. Thank you.
Further discussion, Mr. Shanks.
Yes, I, I agree. That was an unfortunate zoning case, and the gentleman had a good plan. I guess that goes a long way in saying something about peace in the valley when another zoning case comes up. And they've certainly got peace in the valley on this one. But I'm glad to see the land's gonna be used. I thought during that case that you were referring to, Mr. Rowley, I thought that highway retail commercial would be the least desired on that piece of property. But apparently with the change of ownership around the property, and there's peace in the valley, so I don't see any problem with the case. Thank you.
Vogler.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on what's been said by two previous councilmen. I supported that project. I was one of the few that had approved it that night. We were, I think, when we only had six council members. And I do feel bad, you know, that it happened the way that it did. And I think we made some changes after that in terms of waiting time for appeals. It didn't, unfortunately for that gentleman, wasn't able to help him. But in terms of the future, then, I too thought, you know, residential would be more preferable to, to retail. But, you know, if the, the neighbors around it are, are okay with it, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with the development. So, you know, I support this, and I guess it's a learnable lesson for all of us. Thank you, man.
Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye. Consideration of adopting an ordinance amending chapter forty-one entitled zoning ordinance of the Code of the City of Danville, nineteen eighty-six. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. Mr. Vogler.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending chapter forty-one entitled zoning ordinance of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, nineteen eighty-six, as amended, more specifically, article three M entitled HRC Highway Retail Commercial, section C entitled Uses Permitted by Special Use Permit to Allow Wholesale Sales by Special Use Permit.
Second, Mr. Buckner. Okay, your discussion on the motion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Consideration of adopting an ordinance granting a special use permit to allow for wholesale sales at three thirty-five Mountain Cross Road. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. My name's Will Leggett, and I own the property that I'm asking for special permit. There is a local business that would like to enlarge and move to our facility where hopefully they could do more volume and hire more people. And that's why I'm asking for this, and would be glad to answer any questions that any of y'all might have.
Any question for Mr. Leggett? Thank you, sir. And hello to you as well, okay? Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else? Close the public hearing. Mr. Gilstrap.
Mayor, I move for adoption ordinance granting a special use permit to allow for wholesale sales in accordance with article three point M, section C, item twenty-five of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, nineteen eighty-six, as amended at three thirty-five Mountain Cross Road.
Second, Mr. Jones. Discussion on the motion. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Consideration of adopting an ordinance rezoning from multifamily residential and threshold residential to attached residential district. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Gretchen Clark with the Reynolds Clark Development, and we're assisting J-Ray Investments with this project. We have designed a layout that encompasses about thirty units, attached dwelling units, with private internal roads for the project. It enters off of Hermitage Drive, and I can answer any other questions that you might have about the project.
Okay, any question? Any question? Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else? Close the public hearing. Counselor, your pleasure. Mr. Shanks.
Yes, Mayor, I move for adoption of ordinance rezoning from MR multifamily residential to TR threshold residential, I'm sorry, and TR threshold residential to AR attached residential district, a one point seven two zero acre portion of parcel fifty-three six seventeen, otherwise known as one point seven two acre partial, portion of grid six oh five, block oh one, parcel four, all four, zero point four six two acres of parcel number six oh five one eight, otherwise known as a five point four three seven acre portion of grid six oh five, block oh one, parcel oh eight, of the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map.
Okay, your second, Mr. Rowley. Discussion of the motion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Communication, Mr. Manager.
Madam, good evening. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Attorney.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk.
Nothing, sir.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner.
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to Virginia organizing for pointing-
for 40 successful years. I hope for many, many, many more years with those guys. Um, also want to send a shout out to my nephew who's, uh, going for, uh, he's getting interviewed by Duke tomorrow to, uh, play basketball for him. Hopefully a full scholarship, fingers crossed. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes, there was a wonderful day yesterday for Martin Luther King celebration at Avery University. Wonderful crowd, good turnout and for all of the activities for the holiday over the weekend was excellent. I'd just like to talk for a couple of minutes on the subject of regionalization and for like for council to consider and for the city manager, how we can develop and be more effective in reference to, uh, the approach of regionalization for national exposure and bringing more industries and businesses within our area. For an example, when we think about Martinsville racing, racing that is going on in the city, Danville hotels are filled. We look at VR world, when they have their race, the hotels are filled. I just wondered, I don't think that we are maximizing our potential. We look at Danville being 43,000 citizens and, uh, if we can mobilize with Henry County, uh, South Boston, Pennsylvania, Yanseville and look how we could be more in reference to numbers, we may get a better, uh, perspectives and interest of the mega part. I think that we are just not limiting our pot- our potential in reference to the growth of our region. So I am asking council along with the city manager that we can constructively look at how we can, uh, be more effective in reference to, um, this idea of regionalization. Every race, we have hotels are filled. It's increased our tax base. I just don't think that we're doing enough to maximize that concept. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Yes, uh, I too would like to say I, I really enjoyed the, uh, luncheon hosted by Avery University yesterday and the motivational speech by Dr. Davis. I thought it was, uh, very, not only very well attended, but very inspirational. I really also enjoyed the youth activities at the North Theater yesterday. I am so very proud of the youth in Danville and the good things that they're doing. And this film highlighted the good things that, that the, uh, kids in our region are doing. I think the title, I was, I Am the Danville, uh, the Dan River Region. But they had youth from, uh, all the county schools, from Caswell County and from Danville and it highlighted the, highlighted our kids. I thought it was great and I appreciate Justin Farrell for doing that and the Regional Foundation for funding it and I hope we all get to see that movie. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, it started on Sunday night when I went by Shiloh and to see the number of people who after they marched, I was actually, I didn't march, but I actually had an opportunity to go inside and to hear Reverend Fuller, when he got up to speak, talk about the love for our community and to hear that and then the following morning, there was a breakfast at the Stratford and then the wonderful event at Avery University. Uh, I'd like to share something that was shared at Avery at the breakfast. There are a lot of people who, Mr. Mayor, don't get a chance to get out for some reason or another. But this pledge was so beautiful when I heard Bishop Campbell reading it on behalf of Avery and the community. It says, I did call, it's called the Birmingham Pledge and it reads, "I believe that every person has worth as an individual. I believe that every person is entitled to dignity and respect regardless of race or color. I believe that every thought and every act of racial prejudice is harmful. If it is my thought or act, then it is harmful to me as well as to others. Therefore, from this day forward, I will strive daily to eliminate racial prejudice from my thoughts and actions. I will discourage racial prejudice by others at every opportunity. I will treat all people with dignity and respect and I will strive daily to honor this pledge, knowing that the world would be a better place because of my effort." And as Mr. Gilstrap stated, once we left there to go to the North Theater and see the number of young people, Wendy Goods, uh, Wendy Everson from the Dan River Regional Foundation and Justin Farrell did a phenomenal job. Justin told us at the Avery event that he said, "I just hope at least 200 people come out." And with Mr. Vogler, myself, Mr. Gilstrap, it was jam packed. And to see the number of young people there, it was an awesome event and I say kudos as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Thank you, Councilman Jones, for reading the Birmingham Pledge. As you were a member of Danville United's first meeting, we had a, a man who'd written the Birmingham Pledge came up and, and spoke on that and that's become our motto with Danville United. And again, we encourage you to participate in Danville United. Uh, thank you, Virginia Organizing. Appreciate all you've done. Virginia Organizing gives a voice to those who otherwise would not have a voice. And the events this weekend were great. Uh, the Southern Christian Leadership Dinner on Saturday night. Excellent meeting, excellent speaker, uh, the Avery, uh, uh, dinner yesterday or luncheon. And then, uh, the, uh, March Against Violence. People came from South Boston, Martinsville, Richmond, not to protest, but just to come down and march against violence. It's an annual march we have here and it's, it's just a great thing to walk with others. And, uh, again, we're not protesting against anything. We just want to stop the violence that's going on. As John Lennon said, give peace a chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowley?
Uh, just, Avery's appreciative. It was a good turnout yesterday. It was over 350 people. And, uh, good message. And, uh, very appropriate. Thank everybody for coming.
Mr. Shanks?
I, uh, I just have one, one item this evening. I just, uh, I feel very positive in the fact that today we had four rezoning cases. Local business people, investors, uh, who see fit to invest in our community and, uh, they're growing their businesses, they're improving their property, investing in property and some of them already talking about companies that'll be hiring and growing, creating new positions. So it's been a long time since we've had four, I think it's been a long time since we've had four or five cases and maybe this is a very good sign, but I want to say thank you to everyone that, uh, has been here tonight in front of us to, uh, make an investment in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vogler?
Yeah, I first of all just, uh, want to make note, Councilman Jones wanted me to point out that those who are interested in taking the Birmingham Pledge, you can go to birminghampledge.org and you can do so there. Councilman Campbell may have read my mind because I also wanted to talk about regional cooperation and, uh, regional tourism, the possibility of a regional tourism director. There was a, uh, summit that was held not too long ago where representatives from the state came down and met with people from the city and the county and that was one of the things that they talked about was the need to maximize, uh, tourism and to maximize the, the assets that we have here and to find a way to do that. So I hope, uh, in, in the coming months, especially when both of us are talking about our budgets, the city and the county, um, that we can possibly have a joint meeting between the two of us and, and look at possibilities, uh, for that. And I, and I think that it is a worthwhile cause. I can tell you, you know, not just the things that Councilman Campbell mentioned which are important, but also, you know, the film industry in Virginia right now is huge. And I've talked to the people at the Virginia Film Office, uh, and they're very interested in some of the things that we have in this area for filming locations. But we need a point person who can kind of oversee all of that and that would be a part of it. Um, so I think that's a discussion that I look forward to having, I hope we will have. Uh, and I want to thank Councilman Campbell for bringing up that, that issue tonight. Uh, and lastly, I just want to say, and as mentioned by some before, you know, we had a tremendous day of events yesterday. Uh, the one in particular that, that really kind of moved me and inspired me was the event that was held at the North Theater, um, that was really centered around our young people. Um, I wish, you know, some of our school board members had been able to attend because they would have seen hundreds of teenagers that were there and involved in a creative, uh, positive project. Um, and, and many of them were Danville Public School students. There were some from the county and some from North Carolina also, but a large chunk of them were Danville Public School students. And, you know, I know that, um, young people today, they get kind of a bad rap uh, from, from the older generation, you know, and I think that's kind of always been a time-honored tradition to, to look at the younger generation and possibly think, well, you know, the, they just, they're not as good as the generation before them. But I can tell you, it wasn't that long ago that all of us up here were teenagers and, you know, some of us more recently than others and-
Thank you.
But, you know, we make mistakes, yeah, we did. And were we perfect? No, we weren't and we're still not. But like the young people today, we had hopes and dreams and aspirations of, of who we could be and what we could do. And I've said it many times, I still believe, you know, Danville's best days are still in front of us and a lot of it because of the young people that we have in this area. And we as elected officials, as leaders, as mentors, as adults, we need to do more to reach out to them, to engage them, to speak with them, but more importantly, listen to them. And I think that's honestly what a lot of our young people today, that's what they want. They just want to be heard, a chance to be heard. And we saw some of that yesterday. It was a, a, a great event, not just the film that was shown, but to see the talented display of, of, there was poetry, there was dancing. It was just a phenomenal event. You know, those of us up here, we have the benefit of, of life experience, but the, the young people, they have the benefit of, of seeing things from a different perspective to have that unbridled optimism, to, to think thoughts that have not been spoken yet, ideas that haven't been heard, a perspective that we haven't seen. And they are our future and I think the more that we partner with them, we can create that better tomorrow, today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor Saunders?
Thank you. Congratulations again to Virginia Organizing for the work they're doing in our city and especially the partnership in trying to help the city, help those who are having some very, very difficult times. It was a wonderful, I think, Dr. King weekend. In addition to the ones that already been mentioned in terms of activities, there were several over the weekend. I think Friday evening, there was one at Church Town Missioners Association for young people sponsored by the SCLC. Saturday, there was a banquet at the Stratford Conference Center and that was sold out. Uh, Sunday, there were many church services regarding Dr. King's, um, contribution to our country. Also, Sunday evening, as mentioned, there was a march to Shiloh Baptist Church. Uh, Monday morning, the Omega Psi Phi fraternity had a breakfast at Stratford Conference Center and that was a sellout. That was a sold out. Matter of fact, it turned people away. Could not get in because of, uh, fire codes, uh, in terms of crowds. Then at Avery, again, good event there as well. And then, uh, Church Stone had a nice program, um, last, um, last night. Speaker from, coming in from Richmond. So Dr. King's celebration, uh, was really remembered all over this weekend. I hope, uh, it will be remembered all year long. And I hope that we look at that history and think about the work that he did and the movement that he started and understand we should not be stuck in the 60s. It's 2015 and that work need to continue and be young with regards to bringing people together, not just in our country, but all over the world. So very thankful to him and his family for what he started and I ask that we do the best we can to, to keep that up. Let me also say, we had some very tough times, um, in our city in, in terms of the economy, which is now improving and a lot of work, uh, to be done. And we have some great city employees in our city, all 1,100 plus. And I want to say a special thank you to all of our employees. Regardless of what your job description says, thank you for what you do every day. You are the face of our city. You represent us well and we thank you for doing that. Also, a special thanks to our law enforcement. We hear about law enforcement all over this country and especially over the world now with the issues going on. But I am very proud to say that Danville has a great Department of Law Enforcement Officers. I don't like to single people out. Again, special thanks to all of our employees. But when it come down to the police 24/7, when we leave threatening situations, they go to it. They put their lives on the line every day, in uniform and out of uniform. So thank you all for what you do every day. Thank you for choosing the career. And a lot of people wouldn't do it, but you do it because you care and we are very, very indebted to our law enforcement. Special thanks to our chief. Really appreciate the presentation, the work session, the last meeting. I thought it was very, very helpful and I've heard many, many positive comments from that. And, um, on a more jovial note, I know he has been waiting for it. I was waiting for the cheese tonight, but the, uh, cheese didn't come because I had my own cheese and, but that's okay. So maybe next year, okay, Mr. Shanks? I will see you, I will see you again next year, sir. All right, having said that, meeting adjourned.